Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 15th May 2 meeting of the Santa Monica Planning Commission. Good, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Here.
Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Landris?
Here.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Here.
And Chair Raskin.
Here. And I think we're ready to go to the Planning Director's Report.
Good evening, Vice Chair Raskin and Commission. Nice to see you all. Coming up with Planning Commission meeting on July 6th, currently, we have no items scheduled, so that meeting may be canceled. We'll let you know as soon as we make that final decision. And then on July 20th, we have Zero Emissions Ordinance and EV Charging Reach Code to present to the Commissions. City Council Actions on June 14th, the Council approved a modification to the HRNA contract, and also approved two landmark appeals, and in approving the appeals, denied the designation of the two landmarks, or proposed landmarks. And then upcoming at City Council, next Tuesday, June 21st, they will review draft redline revisions for the housing element. So following your meeting tonight, staff will quickly tomorrow incorporate comments from the Commission into the Council Staff Report. A very quick turnaround, but again, the Council will be discussing what you're discussing tonight, next Tuesday. Same night, they're also talking about the Council Rules of Order. And then June 28th is Budget Adoption. We've talked already about the budget. I don't anticipate any changes between what was talked about in the Budget Study Sessions and what gets adopted in terms of in planning positions. We do have a few positions that are being converted from limited term to permanent, and it looks like those are still being recommended. Not listed on here, but July 14th, we are presenting the Ocean Avenue Hotel project to the Council for their final review and approval. It's a special meeting, again, July 14th, on a Thursday night, so that will be coming up. And then some project updates, May 26th, the ADU Accelerator Project Launch Workshop. We had 35 attendees, and then for more information, the website, www.santamonica.gov/housingelement-update. I think that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Right, does anybody have any questions? Done, we'll move on. So we're now going to go to Planning Commissioner announcements, but before I turn to the rest of you, let me announce the public comment procedures. Please note that tonight's procedures for public comments are as follows. We are accepting real-time oral public comment by phone for each item. Please check the top of the posted agenda for the phone number to call once the caller queue for each item opens. The caller queue will open when each item is introduced and will close after the first five public comments are heard. Written comments received up until noon today have been read by the Commission. Comments received after 12 noon today will be considered part of the record of proceedings, but may not be posted online with the Planning Commission Agenda prior to the meeting. The moderator chat function in blue jeans is for technical help from admin staff only. It is not for public comments. The Commission cannot see the chat and comments will not be forwarded to the Commission or entered into the record. With that, do any Commissioners have any announcements? Being none, let's move on to the Consent Calendar. So we'll now open the caller queue for public comments on items on the Consent Calendar. Staff, if you could, the phone number on screen and start the timer for doing that. And are there any Commissioners who want to pull any Consent Calendar items? I see the Planning Manager there. I think you're on mute there, Jing. Sorry, I still can't hear you.
Hey Jing, do you want me to describe what's going on with this item? Yeah, hi, everyone, this is Tony Kim, Principal Planner. We actually need to pull this item off to make a correction. There's a typo in one of the conditions of approval that we'd like to share with the Commission, and I believe the applicant as well would like to make a small proposal modification to their hours of operation.
Tony, you're talking about item 2A, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, well, in that case, let's go ahead and pull 2A. Does anybody want to pull 2B?
I was going to move the Consent Calendar if there's a second, what's remaining.
Second.
All right, in that case, do we have any colors on the remainder of the Consent Calendar?
I don't see any colors yet. I apologize. I can share that now.
So we'll wait our minute?
Yeah, let's wait the... One minute if we can, and following that, then we'll consider the motion. All right, did we get any callers?
No callers.
All right, so we've got a motion on the floor to move the remainder of the Consent Calendar, which is item 2B. Let's, is there any discussion on this? Being none, let's have a roll call vote.
So just to clarify, that was a motion by Commissioner Landris and second by Lead Commissioner Fresco. And Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Yes.
Chair Raskin?
Yes. All right, that passes. Let's go to 2A then. This has been pulled. We do have to make ex parte disclosures if there are any. Does anybody have any? Being none, let's go ahead and open, Commissioner Landris?
I was just wondering if we could waive the staff report, and perhaps, Jerry, you could simply ask the staff what the typo is, and then we can go to the applicant.
Yeah.
I moved that we waived the staff report.
Yeah, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, well, before we vote, let's put the... Well...
We gotta hear it, and then the timer later. I guess we have to open.
Yeah, let's open the caller queue for this item.
There you go. Leslie, it's okay.
I know. I know, we're 15 minutes into the meeting.
Can we vote on the motion to waive the staff report while the timer's going?
Yeah, to waive the staff report, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Yes.
Chair Raskin?
Yes. All right, so we've got about 40 seconds left.
No, no, it stays open until we get to, they can call in until we get to the public comment. They're good.
Okay, so in that case, staff, can you go ahead and let us know what the typo is that's being changed? And actually, I think we do have to open up the public hearing to let the applicant tell us what it is they want changed first, right?
No, we're asking staff a question. We're fine.
Okay. All right, staff, in that case, can you let us know what the typo is?
Hi, this is David, the owner of McCall's for 2A. The typo was for the hours of operation. We were open from 10 a.m. to 7 p.m., Tuesday through Friday.
David, can you hold on one second? We're asking a question of staff, and we'll give you a chance to speak in just a moment.
Yes.
Hi. Good evening, Commissioners. This is Anna Fernandez, Staff Planner. The typo is actually in condition number two, and the error is noting, it was leftover language from a different staff report where it indicates instructional tastings on the second line. So the language should omit the instructional tastings section of that condition. Because this applicant isn't proposing to have this type of license.
Can you guys see the redline language on the screen?
I can see it, yeah.
Great.
Like everyone else can.
Yep.
All right, are there any other questions of staff? Being none, let's then turn back to the applicant. David, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm here.
All right. In that case, why don't you... Well... Not sure where that's coming from. All right, yeah, why don't you go ahead then with your presentation if you have one?
Well, actually, Sue had the presentation on her PowerPoint, which she obviously can't get on right now. But, you know, just want to introduce myself. My name is David Sroff, the owner of McCall's Me and Fish Company. We are a high-quality butcher shop in the neighborhood. We started in 2009 in Los Feliz. I actually bought the company two years ago and opened one up here in Santa Monica, January 26th. And we just wanted to add a, you know, added value to our customers by bringing on a beer and wine off-site consumption. Nothing in the store. I think it brings a value to our customers, and we get asked a lot, you know, with a high-end steak or fish, what would be great with the, what kind of pairing with wine and beer? And we thought, be great, and try to bring it along and give it to our customers. We've, like I said, we've been in Los Feliz since 2009, and we just opened this up about six months ago, and want to try to bring this on and see if we can help our customers with more shopping experience and go from there.
All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Seeing none, do we have any public commenters for this item?
There is one number. I'm not sure if this is Sue Steinberg, but I will let them in.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Hi, this is Sue. Hi, sorry about that. I don't know why our computers, but we can actually access blue jeans. So we had a lovely PowerPoint presentation for you all set up in case we got knocked off Consent Calendar. So, but I'm going to go ahead and wing it just verbally if that's okay for a moment. As I think David indicated, it's a pretty small request of the McCall's Fish, Meat and Fish, it's there, it's operational. They just want to go ahead and add beer and wine as an amenity for their patrons. The area, that's the display area, is about nine square feet of display area, comprising about 16 and a half linear feet, which is approximately 2% of the retail service area. So it's a small, small area. The other thing that I would like to, since we're off consent anyway, ask to change is a small change to the hours of operation that was listed on the STOAH. It's the same hours essentially every day. We just like them shifted slightly. In the STOAH, it said that the hours of operation were listed as 10:30 to 7:30, Wednesday through Friday, and Tuesday, Saturday, and Sunday is 10:30 to 6:00. So we have early hours, but we'd actually like to change it just slightly and make them 10 a.m. to 7 p.m., Tuesday to Friday, and Saturday and Sunday, 10 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. So it's essentially starting a half hour earlier and ending about a half hour earlier. So we would like to make that change since we're here anyway. We are closed on Monday, so it's six days a week. I'm not going to discuss all the findings, but we do actually need all the findings. We are compatible with the other uses in the area. There is no negative impact to the area in conjunction with a small, you know, scale boutique butcher store, and we have very limited scope of sales of alcohol being proposed here. So I don't, if there's no other ABC, we did a review of ABC licenses. There's no undue concentration in that area. There's no parks, schools, or churches within 500-foot radius. So I'm happy to discuss the hours of operation if you'd like. Otherwise, again, for Anna's, and I did text or email Anna, the proposed changes to hours of operation. So anyway, I'm available for questions.
Commissioner Lambert, do you have a question?
I do not have a question. I just want to move this on to discussion, and if other people have questions.
Any other questions?
Or a motion, actually.
I move we approve 2B, or was that A?
Second. With the changed hours, right?
With the change to hours of the corrected STOAH.
But not the onsite consumption?
What onsite consumption?
Well, that's what I misunderstood. I guess I misunderstood. They were asking for some...
Oh.
No, no, there was a correction in the STOAH that they wanted, that said they were going to do tastings, but that wasn't supposed to be there.
Right, I agree. Nothing else, just the hours.
Hold on.
And the correction.
Anna, do you have the redlines that were proposed by the applicant team?
Yeah, we need to see those.
We do have them, just a moment.
It would also result in a modification to the finding to reflect the hours consistent with the change in the condition.
10 a.m. to 7 p.m.
And staff, are you okay with these changes?
Yes.
These look good. Earlier they stopped, yeah, this is good.
Let's move on.
All right, has everyone seen this? Everyone seen this? I think yes. All right. Before we move on to motion, just confirming that there are no other callers? All right, is, all right, has everyone seen this? Everyone, everyone seen this? I think yes. All right, um, before we move on to motion, just confirming that there are no other callers?
No other callers.
All right, well, we have a motion on the floor and I forget who made it, but let's go ahead and take a.
And I second you.
All right, well, there you go. Um, unless I'm missing some part of the agenda, I, I think we're ready to vote on this.
Okay, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Yes.
And Chair Raskin?
Yes. All right, well, that concludes the then calendar. We've got nothing under items three, four, five, six or seven. Uh, I don't believe we've received any written occasions, uh, that move us on to nine A, the discussion and possible recommendation regarding the red lines to the housing element. Uh, I believe it's time for the staff presentation. Um, and I see Commissioner Fonda Bernardi's got a hand up there.
I have an announcement regarding this item. Uh, I have a property that's within five hundred feet of one of the city parking lots. It's designated for conversion or housing. In addition, I lease an office that's within five hundred feet of two boulevards that are being upzoned and probably are gonna be upzoned. I've consulted with the city attorney regarding this and she's told me that I can sit in on this hearing because it is policy-driven, not specific to certain sites. And then she will give me a judgment on when we get to the red lines of the actual zoning code, whether I can sit in on that without a conflict of interest. I just wanted everyone to know that.
All right, um, are we ready for the staff presentation?
We are, um, and gonna wait for Ross to fire up the PowerPoint. There we go, okay. Um, so good evening commissioners, um, happy to be here tonight, um, after, um, an extensive consultation process with HCD and reviewing and clarifying, um, all of the comments that were received on the housing element, um, and their February eighth letter. Um, staff has had, um, many phone calls with, uh, HCD staff, um, and the purpose of tonight is to review, um, the draft, uh, red line revisions to the housing element. Um, and for the planning commission to, uh, make a possible recommendation to the city council um, on the draft red line revisions, um, which are in response to HCD's comments, um, and a result of those consultations. Um, the, uh, staff report tonight isn't, you know, going into every single change in detail because there, there are many red lines. We trust that, um, you have reviewed them. They're attached to the agenda, but generally speaking, um, you know, we'll kind of review in concept, um, what the changes are. And then if the commission has questions on particulars, you know, we'd be happy to go through those in our deliberations. Um, so the general categories of the changes include, uh, what we largely call technical revisions, um, you know, and you'll see those in, uh, appendix F, which is the suitable sites inventory report, uh, appendix E, which is the constraints analysis. Um, there's changes with respect to updating some numbers for ADUs and then chapter four, um, which is, uh, land available for housing. Um, there's a second bucket of changes that have to do with affirmatively furthering fair housing or AFFH. Um, and we will talk through the consultations and the sort of conclusions, you know, we reached with HCD staff on Santa Monica's fair housing approach and how that influenced these changes. Um, we'll go through the rezoning, um, and this commission has been discussing these really since last December, um, you know, so this has been an an iterative process, um, and we're here tonight with, um, the, uh, current recommendation for heightened FAR adjustments, you know, that um, is the rezoning that underpins, um, the suitable sites inventory and the distribution of housing capacity across the city. And then finally, um, the city-owned sites, you know, and clarifications to the commitment, um, that the council, uh, adopted, um, back in October. Uh, next slide. Um, so, you know, background on, on this process, um, the city council adopted the housing element on October twelfth, um, and that was transmitted to HCD for their review. Um, we did not waste any time, as you're all aware, you know, we jumped right into the housing element implementation, so all the zoning changes, um, you know, shortly after the, um, city council adopted the housing element, we began working with the commission on the zoning changes all the way through February. Um, but we got pretty far along in the process and, you know, we were on track to sort of get to council in March. Um, as we know, the letter was received in February the eighth, um, which put a pause to that rezoning process, you know, as we have to go back to the, um, policies, uh, the policy document of the housing element um, to try and sort through things because first and foremost, um, HCD's interest is that, you know, that there be a compliant housing element that's the city's interest as well before we, we go back to the implementation. Um, we provided a progress update to the commission on maybe eleventh on those consultations and sort of, you know, a flavor of, you know, where we were going in concept. And then, um, as recently as two weeks ago, um, we talked really about the key factors that affected the overall capacity. Um, you know, so we, at this point, the overall capacity we're looking at in the housing element is, is, you know, in the ballpark of thirteen thousand units um, at this point, and, you know, we'll talk tonight about the specific direction that the planning commission gave on heightened FAR. Next slide. Um, you can see here that, uh, you know, this is kind of like looking forward at the anticipated progress or excuse me, process as we go forward after tonight, um, we're here at June fifteenth with the planning commission. We will be in front of the city council on Tuesday, um, June twenty-first, um, to go through these red line revisions, you know, to incorporate the planning commission's recommendation to the council. Um, and then our goal is to transmit this to HCD, um, in, uh, July. Um, and, you know, the process really is, as we explained in the report, you know, in an, in an, in an ideal world, um, we've gone through this extensive consultation process. Um, these red line revisions reflect those discussions, you know, as we indicated, HCD staff has, um, preliminarily given us, uh, positive feedback, you know, with respect to the approach, obviously subject to, um, you know, their more detailed review and public comment, um, you know, but they have seen, um, all of these red line revisions, um, and they've, you know, given feedback that this is moving, um, in, in the right direction, you know, so I think we have reason to feel, um, you know, that this is, that, that these red lines are addressing, um, HCD's comments, you know, and, and, um, will get us to a compliant housing element. Our goal in transmitting these draft red line revisions is to receive, um, something called a drafting compliance letter, uh, which is, you know, essentially what it sounds like, that, you know, the draft revisions are found to be in compliance. And then, you know, that kicks back to the city and there may be some tweaks we have to make and then it allows us to move forward. Um, you know, after our additional environmental analysis is done, um, that's probably gonna be somewhere in September um, that we return to council then and have an adoption of a, a compliant housing element. So, you know, that includes um, any, any further changes that are needed. So that's sort of, you know, what we anticipate um, or hope for, uh, going forward, but obviously that's, um, you know, that's gonna be subject to, to HCD's review. Um, so jumping in now into the, the buckets of the provisions, next slide. Um, so the first grouping, as you heard me mention, those technical revisions, um, first and foremost is appendix F, the suitable sites inventory. Um, lots of, you know, additional maps and tables explaining how the SSI sites, um, improve or exacerbate for housing conditions. So there's those, um, we sort of previewed for you at the last, uh, meeting, you know, some of those graduated dot maps that basically show the difference in total, um, housing capacity that was added, um, to each census tract in the city on top of the, um, the, the AFFH maps that were in chapter two um, already, uh, so you, so you see that actually in, in appendix F. Um, and that's been overlaid on top of this match just to, again, demonstrate the data. Um, a lot of HCD's uh, comments here were really with respect to, you know, additional data analysis, um, re, reframing the data, presenting the data in a different way, so it's more clear. Um, semantics and, you know, language choice and, and what have you, um, and lots of work to the SSI table um, as well, you know, again, to clarify the information that was there, but to sort of make it easier to sort of follow the story. We also included, you know, a big graphic of the methodology to be very clear about, um, you know, how, um, sites were filtered down, you know, to ultimately what resulted in the SSI. Um, as we had talked about before, um, you know, one of the, the main comments with respect to the suitable sites inventory was about the realistic capacity. So, um, in terms of how the city demonstrate that there is the overall capacity to accommodate the arena, they wanted us to take into account, um, you know, because the zoning does not exclude the probability of commercial development happening, you know, it's not, we, we don't have a prohibition on commercial development. So that was something that was accounted for in the SSI, so there was a fifteen percent across-the-board haircut. Um, and that was one of the things that bumped up our overall capacity to make up for that loss. And then, as I explained, um, you know, the, this diagram explaining, uh, more, more backup and, you know, past trends and what have you to justify the use of the factors, um, that filtered down, um, all the sites to get to the SSI. Um, and then more evidence, you know, again, data and trends, you know, so that, that was really the, the sort of focus, um, of comments on the SSI. We did want to note here that there were four sites that were inadvertently omitted from the SSI table, um, that was provided, um, in the attachment to your staff report. Um, and you can see the addresses that, um, are listed there that were inadvertently omitted. They were just kind of, you know, uh, cursor jumped off the screen, and so we just wanted to note that tonight, um, that that was not meant, those four sites were not meant to be removed from the SSI. Um, but that would be a revision we would add. Next slide. Um, on appendix E, which is the constraints analysis, um, the, this is a listing of, uh, all of, um, HCD's comments and specific about, um, you know, uh, areas to address in the constraint analysis, they included, um, demonstrating, you know, that there's sufficient capacity, um, in emergency shelters, uh, to, you know, relative to um, what was reported in, in the homeless count. Um, permanent supportive housing, they requested a clarification to en, to ensure that there's no discretionary action is required for supportive housing. So that was additional language that was added. Um, employee housing, again, clarification and sort of, you know, references to specific aspects of state law with respect to employee housing, so that was added. Um, in terms of lang use controls, um, there's language been added to programs one F and one J to clarify the intent that, um, it is the city's intent to modify those standards as appropriate that are found to be, um, constraints as part of the, the zoning work. Um, and as part of that, the FAR and height tables have been added to those programs as well. That was something that was requested because it demonstrates, you know, that very specific commitment and establishing a minimum of FAR in height, uh, fees and exactions, um, you know, they were essentially, th- this one focused about on, on, on the cost of a conditional use permit, which of course is not something that is needed for multi-unit residential, um, development in Santa Monica. So, um, there's explanation and clarification added um, to appendix E, um, about fees for a CUP. And then, uh, permit procedures, this is about design approval findings, you know, again, clarifying that, um, how design review is practiced in Santa Monica, you know, that ARB does not have the purview to deny a housing project, you know, so again, just clarifying what their purview is, how that's been practiced. And then, um, in, uh, program two point, I think that one's I actually, two I, uh, revisions um, to include the known amendments needed for state law consistency, and this had to do with, um, you know, uh, parking requirements and, and, and things like that. Uh, you know, that, that we are compliant with state law. So, um, that was the nature of the changes in the constraints analysis. And the next slide, um, on accessory dwelling units, um, this was something that, um, we've probably reviewed six, seven, many, many times. Um, and, uh, this one is just, uh, a, a cleanup of the numbers, um, again, to review the permit data, um, and the focus here, instead of looking at, uh, what was in process, you know, is really just how many ADU building permits were issued. So really just simplifying that data a lot, and so that's the update that was also made in appendix E, and then you'll see the, um, cross-reference in chapter four that is updated. Um, based on those revisions, you know, we will need to revise our annual progress reports to HCD just so they match up with, um, these numbers that have now been triple-checked. You know, and we are, um, confident about them, um, and they are the basis, um, to be able to project that going forward over this housing element cycle, um, the city is committing to, you know, issuing forty-seven building permits a year on average, um, for ADUs. Um, you can see in the table that, you know, we issued somewhere in the above, like a hundred and twenty uh, building permits, you know, last year. So it continues to be something that's very, very popular, um, particularly in our R1 zones. Um, so that is sort of the, the overall, you know, summary of the technical revisions. Moving into affirmatively furthering fair housing. Um, this was a subject of extensive consultation with HCD and, um, ultimately we were able to come to, um, you know, walk them through the fair housing strategy. And, you know, they, they, they responded positively to, you know, Santa Monica is, is, is different than most cities. We've been doing um, housing preservation work for decades, and so there's a, you know, we're able to walk through the programs um, and adding, um, what they were looking for here is really adding metrics to those programs. Um, so we worked with our partners in housing and human services and rent control um, and the city attorney's office, um, you know, to add, um, targeting and programs, um, and, and metrics to, to those programs and you know, that the fair housing strategy in Santa Monica leads first and foremost, um, with housing preservation. So, um, you'll see a lot of red lines in chapter five and the programs related to housing preservation. Um, program two F, G and I, um, all of the programs under goals three and four and six and seven, you can see there, those are, those goals largely are a reflection of all of Santa Monica's actions um, on things like anti-displacement, housing preservation. Um, in goal four, um, there are two brand-new programs that have been added. Four E is with respect to SB nine. Four F, um, is a new, uh, metrics and mid-cycle monitoring, uh, program, um, in the R1 zone. So that's related to the forty-seven building permits per year that I just talked about. Uh, goal six is about housing assistance, um, lots of background information there. Um, added about, um, you know, Santa Monica's, uh, tremendous efforts over the COVID emergency, um, to get, um, emergency rental assistance um, to, um, households that need it. Um, and goal seven, in terms of fair housing enforcement, um, all of the education and outreach and um, that the city does in terms of educating landlords and tenants on their rights and responsibilities. Um, so, you know, there's a lot of, um, additional background and information, and then again, you know, mostly metrics, um, relationships that are quantified objective um, that's in the housing element and adding it to the programs. Um, a big reason for that is because, um, you know, in this cycle, there's, um, HCD will be monitoring, you know, each and every city's progress to that, you know, so that's, that, that's why, you know, they have such a significant interest in ensuring that there is these measurable targets, um, in each program. The other aspect of the AFFH strategy is, you know, on the other side of housing preservation is in the production realm. And that's where, um, you know, as we've discussed extensively with the commission, how AFFH influences the distribution of housing capacity in terms of FAR in height, um, throughout the city and where we allow housing. So, you know, with their, with their proposed rezoning changes, um, housing it would be a permitted use throughout the city. Um, in our consultations with HCD, you know, they, they, they did understand that, you know, Santa Monica's relative um, homogeneity, um, with being a high, highest resource, um, city, you know, means that our fair housing strategy looks different, you know, than most cities. We don't have those huge um, socioeconomic disparities, you know, that some other cities have, you know, at least according to, to the TCAC map. So, you know, they're really looking for, you know, is or, or, is, is, you know, housing being distributed throughout? Is it fair, you know, for, for everybody? Is it, is it all over the place? It's not just sort of concentrated, you know, in any one particular area. And then, of course, AFFH inform the programs, um, for the R1 zones. Uh, so next slide, we will go through these heightened FAR tables, um, you know, I don't think we need to go through in, in huge detail, you can, you have the tables in your report. Uh, we've actually posted this PowerPoint to the, uh, website already, so you can certainly take a look at that as well to follow along. Um, at your June one meeting, the commission recommended, um, that there be an increase to three point two five um, FAR, um, in areas that you had previously recommended. So, um, staff has taken that forward, um, you know, in the proposed FARs before you tonight, particularly, um, on, I believe it was MUB um, and the MUB on north of I-ten, um, and then specifically in, in the, uh, Bergamot area, um, Ross, if you keep going to slide, yeah, next one there, um, that there was, uh, the, the commission, you know, discussed the four point O and eighty-four feet um, in the mixed-use creative area. I think after thinking it through, you know, we, we did want to offer up sort of an alternative to that as well. Um, and if you can sort of jump to the maps, Ross, actually, that would be helpful. Um, yeah, right, right there, um, it is a helpful demonstration of, you know, what we're talking about here. Um, so you can see that, um, uh, what the commission was discussing was, you know, sort of like east of, uh, Berkeley Street, but I think in looking at this in more closer detail, you know, you can see that um, some of what we had heard, you know, in terms of the reasoning for limiting it to, um, east of Berkeley Street, um, you know, the zoning actually sort of changes, um, you know, it's not MUC all the way down Nebraska. It's actually Conservation Creative Sector, you know, which would remain at two point five and fifty-five feet. Um, and so, you know, it, it maybe wasn't making sense, you know, to sort of split MUC right at that Berkeley line. And, you know, just maybe make the whole zone four point O, eighty-four feet. But what we did want the commission to consider is as an alternative, you know, do we want to think about maybe a transition, um, particularly south of the Expo Bike Path, you know, particularly south of the Expo Bike Path, you know, where across exposition, it becomes some very low-scale residential neighborhoods. Same thing on the northern parts of MUC, basically north of Nebraska. Do we want to consider instead of a 4.0, 84 feet, like a 3.25 and 70 feet, you know, which would essentially match what is being proposed for Woolshire. So that's, that's something that we're just presenting to the commission tonight. We heard you in terms of the 4.0 and 84 feet. That is in your tables, but as an alternative to allow a, a sort of jambler transition residential neighborhoods, you know, to consider what you see on the screen there in terms of an alternative FAR and height in the mixed-use creative area. If you can go back, Ross just went up to downtown, to the downtown table, sorry. You can see here that, you know, there wasn't changes from the commission's recommendation. This is the same as it's been, which is the Tier One at 2.75 and 60 feet. We did want to note a change that was made to the height in Tier Two. We just recognized an incongruency in the 3.5 FARs in Tier Two for a neighborhood village. I think it was, you know, existing at 60 feet. However, on the boulevards, that's 70. So you'll see like there's a height increase there, you know, just to be consistent with what's happening on the boulevards. And then go to the next slide on the map. This is a visual representation, you know, kind of the, of, of where the intensity of housing capacity is. So you can see here, the darker blue is representing areas, you know, that have the higher FARs throughout the city. So you can see that, you know, primarily it is focused in the areas north of the I-10 freeway. Particularly that yellow outlined area, which is all those boulevards, you know, Woolshire, Santa Monica, Broadway in Colorado, Bergamot and downtown, you know, those are the areas where some that will have the highest FARs in the city, the industrial conservation as well. And then on a lesser degree, the sort of office campus zone, you know, so you see that 2.75 and 60 feet, you know, at the business park by the airport, and then also around our Cloverfield in Colorado. And then the sort of next step down is sort of the neighborhood commercial areas. So Montana, Maine, Lincoln, you know, parts of Ocean Park, all of those NC zones, a little pocket on 26th Street as well. Near San Senni, 2.5. And then the lowest throughout the city is Pico. You know, kind of the, the Pico neighborhood and then that small pocket on 26th Street. So that's sort of, you know, generally you can see how the geographic distribution ends up laying out citywide when you put those two maps. And then we sort of have blown up maps of Bergamot's and the downtown area. So you can combine them together. You can see here on, on the downtown map that, you know, and the Tier Three got added to the neighborhood village zone out of 4.0, I mean, 84 feet, which would basically extend, you know, what would, what was allowed in the transit adjacent district as well. And then the edges of the downtown are at that 3.0 and 65 feet. Next slide. So moving on to that last piece of the AFFH puzzle, and that's in the R1 zones. So discussions with HCD, you know, finally clarified the requirements of demonstrating commitment is, you know, really just for the additional units in the R1. So it's not a focus on additional deed restricted units. That certainly, you know, helped us in terms of clarifying the path that was taken here. So you know, the commission voted on sort of an, an idea of, of rezoning at your last meeting. And, you know, the discussions at HCD, I think, reveal that, you know, we don't need to go down that road. You know, what we're committing to here is additional units, you know, increasing more housing choices and affordability in some of the most affluent areas of the city, particularly with SB nine. This is following on council's direction from the SB nine study session, you know, to incentivize additional ADUs and SB nine units, you know, on some of the larger parcels in the city. And then you can see Program Four F. It's, you know, aiming to issue at least 47 building permits a year for additional housing units and types in the R1 zone. And then we're going to review progress, you know, at that mid-cycle check-in. And then if targets are not being met, you know, adjust land use strategies as necessary and appropriate within one year. So this is language that is mirroring, you know, what, what HCD has required in other cities that have certified housing elements. But that seemed to make sense here in terms of what, what we're seeing in terms of our activity. Next slide. Moving on now to that final category of changes, which is the city-owned sites. Here you'll, you'll see a slight adjustment. We went back to look, again, just double check those land areas. And there in fact was a small error that was identified in terms of the inclusion of an alley parcel. So Commissioner Fresco, thank you for directing us to, to, to look at that. It was something that was discovered. And so we have adjusted that and corrected that here. It doesn't change the capacity any. You know, you see here, it's still about that 1,880 units, but this is the revised minimum unit capacity for the city-owned sites. And, you know, the, the city-owned sites play a really important role, next slide please, in terms of addressing what's called the lower income shortfall. So this is something that's actually a statutory requirement in government code section 65583.2 HNI. And essentially what it is, is that we are required as part of this housing element to do a calculation, you know, of the difference between what, how, how, how much lower income units, you know, could be what, what, how much capacity we have for lower income units based on existing zoning? And then compare that to our unit allocation. And then that difference is called the lower, it, it is called the shortfall. So you'll, you'll hold that term shortfall of sites or what have you. And what it means is that's what that calculation is. And the lower income shortfall was calculated at approximately 1,430 units. So you can see here that the strategy is to use all of the city-owned sites to cover that lower income shortfall to demonstrate that we do have the capacity for lower income units to cover that 1,430 unit shortfall. The reason there was a focus on the city-owned sites is per state law, these sites must allow 100% residential uses. And then require residential use to occupy at least 50% of the floor area. HCD has indicated that, you know, 100% commercial would not be allowed on these sites that are identified to cover your shortfall. So you know, city-owned sites are the sites where we have the greatest amount of control. And the council has made this commitment already in adopting the housing element to offer up the city-owned sites for affordable housing. So that's just something, you know, that we did want to explain in terms of the city-owned sites, you know, importance. You know, they, they play a pretty key role in terms of housing element compliance. And, you know, should a city-owned site, you know, for some reason through this process, you know, not be included ultimately on a housing element, you know, we would still need to identify an alternate site to make up for that loss. So next slide. These are, this is a red line of Program Two E, which is the city-owned site program that I believe we did show you last time. This is based on the red line, or excuse me, the, the concepts of, you know, demonstrating commitment you know, to a minimum of units. If you have a small typo there, it should be 1,880 and not 1,840. And then a commitment to issue an RFP basically every other year. You know, for the city-owned sites as shown in that table. So that, that is a commitment that the city is making and that, you know, we will facilitate affordable housing, you know, to address lower income shortfall on city-owned sites. Next slide. These are just inadvertent omissions, you know, that, that were brought to our attention in public correspondence that was sent to the planning commission. So we're just including these here for the record. In terms of revisions to Programs One F and One J. You know, adding the word N height, because it is a FAR N height tables that are being added to the housing element. Program One F inadvertently omitted unit mix as one of the, including but not limited to standards that would be reviewed. This was, you know, work that we had already been, you know, was well underway as of February. So you know, that was added. And then Program One D, again, that was a inadvertent error in terms of the timeframe. So that should have read October 15, 2022. So that's just changes, you know, that are not posted, you know, on the agenda, but were brought to our attention through public correspondence. So that's just changes that we will be making. And next slide, that brings us to the end of the presentation and overview of the changes. And the recommendation is, you know, really to the city council to direct staff to transmit these draft outline revisions to HCD. So with that, we are available for your questions.
All right, I saw Commissioner Lambert jump in first. Mr. Lambert, why don't you go ahead with your questions?
I just have a couple. I just want to first say to Jing and her staff, I am just in awe of the work you've put into this. And I really thank you for making our life easier tonight because it's not been easy for the past year and a half. So thank you all for the thousands of hours we've spent on this because it's absolutely extraordinary.
Appreciate that.
I have a couple of questions. I want to make clear tonight what we're doing. This is basically a draft housing element that will go to the city council as a draft, would be adopted as a draft. And that will be submitted to HCD with a comment. Right? This is not the final adoption of a housing element, right?
This is not, no, we, as you're aware, we cannot do a final adoption without having done the additional CECL analysis. You know, so, yeah. So, so this is akin to, you recall last March, when we submitted a draft housing element, right? And our UIR was still in progress. So this is basically the same thing.
Okay, I want to reconfirm what you said in that is at this point, there is no upzoning of R1 anticipated. Or does it seem necessary given HCD's input? Is that correct?
That's, that's right.
Okay. And then I, I still have the concerns, which I probably have to by grade about some of this stuff. But if they're like sort of smaller, or I consider issues that are not directly addressed by the housing element, they can be looked at and discussed more fully when we do the zoning ordinance update and the, the plan updates, right? So the, the more, the more minutia, minutiae that I'm concerned about do not have to be resolved tonight in the housing law.
They do not. You know, this is just, think of it as a floor. You know, and it doesn't, it does not at all preclude the city from exploring things, you know, and, and looking at other areas for sure.
The final question is, if we move forward tonight and adopt this red line, you are looking for input from us about the Bergamot zoning south of the Expo Bike Lane and then that little section of whether we want to go to 4.0 on those or 3.25. But that's really the only advisory you're looking for tonight from us, right?
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, I saw Commissioner Landrus next, and then Commissioner Fresco, you'll be, you'll be after that.
Thank you. I, I'll echo Leslie's thanks to, to Jing, to you and to the staff. I mean, we are, we're closer, we're getting there, and we know how much work you've put into this. And I also want to add our, my thanks, at least to your having listened to us on June 1st, because I think part of what's going to make this go more easily tonight is seeing our conversations reflected in, in this staff report, you know, is, it's just great to see it. And I think it helps us move some things forward. In particular, the, I was very happy to see the openness to some version of an open and continuing RFP for, for affordable, the, the of housing on the city-owned sites. So that the openness to kind of exploring something a bit more systematic. I am wondering, and I was looking for this in the previous draft housing element. I was happy to see that no upzoning is needed in R1 after your follow-up with, after your follow-up with HCD. And I appreciate you confirming that to Leslie. What I was wondering is where in the housing element we note, and I believe Ellis, Commissioner Raskin pointed this out some, some months ago. The fact that a lot of our single-family units are rented rather than owned. Does that appear in the housing element anywhere in writing?
I'm going to have to turn to the team on that. So we did a
I could answer that, yes. It is in Chapter Two, we actually included a map showing all of the rent control units and where they're located at in the R2, R3, R4 zones.
Including single-family homes that are not subject to rent control, right?
He's talking about like rented, single-family homes, rented out in the R1 zones. I, I think that we have statistics on how many renters, I, I mean, we don't, we don't know their locations. Right? Because if they're not, we, we don't, we don't have a rental registry in the city of non-rent controlled housing. But we do have statistics on how many renters there are. And I, Rachel, I feel like in the housing needs, wasn't there information about like rentals of types of units or?
There are, but in terms of mapping, yes. In terms of mapping them and where they're located, that's a little bit more difficult. I think it is broken down by census tracts though in the housing needs assessment. And if you give me a minute, I could try to pull.
Yeah, the map that we do have is the rent control units that show, and, and, and there may, there may well be some registered units in the R1 zones because that was, you know.
Yeah. I ask because I think it's an important in, in follow-up conversations after June 1st, and, and obviously this is not for now, but I just would love to have this in our back pocket. The risk of displacement that comes from potentially upzoning portions of R1 to people who are renters of single-family homes is something that we need to be, have data on so that we can defend our zoning. Should HCD try to come back to us another time? And I just want to have that on the record. I, my only other question is about your recommendations for your alternative heights. And I looked at those. And I, I want to make sure I understand because when I look at, for example, west of Nebraska, or I guess that's sort of northwest of Nebraska, the corner, you know, what, what is it, Nebraska and Stewart? My understanding is that certainly on, on the, on the Colorado side, that was all recently redeveloped. There is possibility of some redevelopment on the other side, but that's not a budding residential. And then on the, on the south side of Olympic, or I guess the southeast side of Olympic, the portion that is in yellow is currently Ishihara Park. And then some businesses, I think, that aren't really ripe for redevelopment. So I'm I understand the interest in the step-down. And if we were really stepping down to residential, I'd be, I'd be into it. But how many of those sites are really on the SSI as likely to be redeveloped?
Yeah. So there, there is one SSI site south of Olympic. And there's, it's, it's sort of like on the eastern edge of it. So that's why, and it's north of the bike path. So that's why, you know, the 4.0 is carried over. But, you know, on the exposition Boulevard site, you know, east of Ishihara, there are some, it's you know, surface parking lots and, not surface parking lots, excuse me, there's, you know, some office buildings there, you know, those certainly you know, could be candidates, you know, for redevelopment. They, they are not on the SSI, you know, but it's not unreasonable. You know, to think that there may be future interest, you know, at, at some point. And so, you know, that, that was the thinking in terms of, it's not just the park. There is, you know, the Expo rail yards, there's the park, but then on the eastern end, you know, that's where it is very much, you know, across the street is residential interface.
So that makes sense to me. And then what about the, what about the other side? What about the Nebraska Stewart area? Because I mean, you've got the Millennium already. I mean, we lost the electric work. But that was recent construction. So where are we talking here?
I think that was just thinking about, you know, the context of the redevelopment that has happened there in terms of the the project that Stewart and Colorado, and then, as you said, the Millennium project. There is one more site that's in the middle, you know, that would kind of, you know, there, there, there was a DA at one point, you know, for that site between those two redeveloped sites, you know, so that was some of the thinking, you know, is it, you know, do they have it, it, they, they would have more potential, you know, than those, than the Millennium project and the office project that.
So why wouldn't, I mean, just help me understand. I don't understand why we wouldn't want to go to 84 feet there because it's in the middle of the block where there's already developed office space and we're not a budding low-rise, lower density.
Yeah, on the, on the northern, on the north side of Colorado. Wait, what is that? That is Colorado, right?
Yeah, but those buildings aren't really ripe for redevelopment. There's a brand-new building on that corner.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think we're talking about what is across the street. Again, the transition across Colorado, that, that's, and that's the question we're posing. You know, should there be a transition on that north part of MUC, you know, particularly along that Colorado interface, you know, where right across the street is R2 zone residential neighborhoods, you know, do you want to have a consideration for that versus, you know, 4.0 and 84 feet? So that, you know, you sort of have that concentration in the middle, you know, closest to Olympic and Nebraska, you know, where you have had a lot of discussions around incentivizing that. And then sort of, it's sort of like teeters out, you know, as it translates. And then sort of, it sort of like peters out, you know, as it transitions to the neighborhoods on the north and the south.
Okay, so then I'll come back to this discussion. I think it would be really helpful, and this is, this is it, I'm, I'm done after this. It would be really helpful to see an actual parcel map there because I don't want to sacrifice the, you know, you, the way you have it set up, right, south and north of the bike path, makes a lot of sense to me. And I would be interested in coming back in discussion and looking to see if we can split that square in similarly logical ways so that we can go up to 84 and 4 FAR on the opposite side, like on the, on the Nebraska Stewart side?
Yeah, we can work on getting a map on a slide for it to facilitate.
Okay, thank you.
We are 84 and 4 on the north side of Nebraska.
No, they're proposing to go, yeah, they're proposing to go down to 325. And, and Jing is right about the Colorado side, right? Because there are low-rise housing right across the street on Colorado. But in, in, in the interior of that mega-block, there's no reason not to go up to 84. It's a great site for houses, great site for housing. And in fact, Pennsylvania, there's still that hope that we're going to open up Pennsylvania as like a bike-walk street all the way through if, if the right developers come along. So...
All right, let's, let's continue this in discussion. Commissioner Landris, that's everything. We'll go to Commissioner Fresco.
Oh, I didn't have my hand up.
Oh, I thought you did earlier. All right. Mr. Fundamentari, is that your hand up there?
I got just two questions. I noticed in 4E, you make a statement that it's required, units are required to be rented or sold. What, what does that mean in real life? What, what are we saying by that statement? What, what are them?
Open up. You said, sorry, which program was that?
That was 4E. I think it was talking about the ADUs or the development SB9. And you had one that says required to be rented or sold. What, what does that mean, I mean, in real life?
Yeah, so what that means is that there would be a requirement that those SB9 units, they're not just being added, that there would be a restriction that they, that they be rented or that, like, basically, the applicant would be, you know, required to select, are you going to have these as rental units? Or are you going to, you know, attempt to subdivide it, you know, and sell one of the units in terms of an SB9 project? So that it's not just, you know, sometimes what we see with ADUs is people build them and, you know, it never maybe quite hits the rental market. It's for, you know, family, friends, or just an extra bedroom or what have you. And, you know, the intent of this is to really incentivize, you know, those additional housing units. But it actually, you know, does address the housing need across the city as well. If, if we're going to allow it be this, because in, in this situation, you'd be allowing additional capacity on some of these larger parcels.
Okay. Then, next question is, you notice that in the city sites, the SSI, if there's any reduction, it has to be made up somewhere else. And it's unclear to me that it has to be made up in another city site or can be made up else in the city.
So, um, yeah, the reason, that, that's part of why we were explaining the importance of the relationship between the city-owned sites and the shortfall. Because the shortfall is a very specific requirement. We're not, that, that's not program language, or I think we're just explaining the sort of like consequence, you know? If one of the city-owned sites was for some reason removed from the list, it would need to be made up. So, it could be another city-owned site. It could be, it's a little more complex if you start moving into private property because of that requirement, that it be a minimum 50% residential, you know, and that it's, and HCD has indicated that, you know, you could not allow commercial development on there in just the way that, you know, we don't, we don't just like pick a site in the city, right? It's, it's essentially, we, we do zoning on a, a zone-wide basis, you know? So, if you're going to apply that requirement, you know, to a single zone, you know, you can see that, that gets a little bit problematic. It's something we would have to work through. So, that's why the focus here in terms of the strategy, just the way that we approached a shortfall, you know, was to focus on the city-owned sites. What we've seen in other cities in terms of how they address the shortfall, they have, you know, vacant land, or maybe they've got like a specific plan area or something, like they're able to actually pick and choose, you know, certain land areas. That's not a luxury that Santa Monica has, it's not the way the city is because we're in a denser urban environment.
Okay, well, but let me understand this. If we have 1,880 units and the shortfall is 1,400 and change, why don't we have a little ability to exploit that difference?
Well, you would want to make sure that you have the flexibility in case, you know, one of them doesn't happen, I guess, you know? So, I think that's, that's just all the city, all the city-owned sites. You know, this, this, this grew out of, of the council's general approach to offering up public land to address the shortfall. But keep in mind that it's not just a shortfall, it's also demonstrating the overall meeting, the, the arena allocation for, you know, overall affordable housing. So, you know, beyond the shortfall, you would want to also have city-owned sites on there because the trade-off is, is that if you take a city-owned site off of there where you're able to say all of them are affordable units, you know, if that comes off, then you have to make it up on private property, which means, you know, ultimately, an increase in FAR to make up that difference.
I understand that, but the, the point I'm making is we have massively upzoned, for example, just to use this example. There are, we have massively upzoned the 84 feet, the Village, the downtown Village, and we don't have the park capacity for what's going to hit downtown. And so, we got to find it somewhere, and 15 Arizona is the only where that could be found at the moment. So, I'm reluctant to say commit to what is it, 360 units on that 15 Arizona site. If, if we were to reduce that and spread it out to the remaining site, would that be the only method? Or would there be another way to get there?
To make up the loss of 360 units?
I'm not saying that we're going to lose 360 units, we may lose 200 units. We may lose a slightly smaller number, but, I mean, we could lose if we found the space. But if we need to find the space, then what's, what's stopping us from finding the space, I guess?
I think that's probably a subject of, of, you know, a discussion with your fellow commissioners in terms of that. I can say that that's not the direction that, you know, that we receive from the city council with respect to public land. You know, this was something that was adopted in the October housing element. These were the sites that were identified, you know, through that process. And, you know, this program was adopted as part of that housing element. And the red lines that, you know, are here are really just a clarification of that commitment. You know, at this point, certainly, you know, if there was a desire to lower the, you know, capacity on that for, for what, whatever reason, you know, that, 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 you know, whatever choice the city council wants to make, we would have to take a look at, you know, how that capacity is made up elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Tolkin or Commissioner Fresco, do you have questions? I see Commissioner Lambert's got one more question there.
I just have a really quick one. We have, we have increased the height in the FAR on Montana to 55 feet and 2.5, correct? In the neighborhood commercial? We have. And that, that is consistent, completely equal to what the neighborhood commercial is going to be on Ocean Park Boulevard and Main Street.
Correct.
We did not, we did not increase FAR height on Pico. And the reason for that is we are trying to mitigate commercial gentrification. So, we're leaving it as it is. Is that all correct? We are upping Montana by five feet and we'll let FAR correspond to Ocean Park and Main Street, right?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up.
Go ahead, Commissioner Landris.
Okay, um, so I'm just going to come back to my questions about that square. And I realized that I had, have had questions about something for a while, and this is the time to ask it. At Stanford, between roughly Backner Way and what appears to be the Pennsylvania extension, there is a very small, but I am sure very important to the people who live there, trailer park. I would not like to do anything that would incentivize the destruction of and/or displacement of the people, you know, of the people living there. So, I want to ask whether, I mean, in discussion, I'll come back and simply propose that we go to 4.0 south of Backner Way or whatever the description is. But I would like to make sure that even 3.25 and 70 feet is not going to incentivize the displacement of those units because we need to preserve each, we need to preserve everybody where they are.
Yeah, without, I, I don't want to get into too many specifics because I think ultimately, it was part of a private settlement. But my understanding, you know, of that trailer park is that they, they are allowed to remain there. You know, it's not, it's not at, at risk of, of being removed. I, again, I don't have all the details, the city, the city was not party to that agreement, but that's just my understanding of, you know, what happened out of that process.
Okay, I would hate for us to take some action that would in any way undermine that agreement. So, I just want to be really, I just want to be really sensitive to that. Okay, thanks.
All right, I've got one quick follow-up question on something Commissioner Fundamentari asked about with respect to program 4E, the language that says that units are supposed to be leased or sold. You know, I'm envisioning a situation where somebody might have elderly relative or, you know, a cousin who might move in and might not be a situation where it's subject to a formal lease. And I'm just curious if there's any reason why you wouldn't want to include that type of arrangement in the program?
You, you're saying could someone lease it to like a family member or something?
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, be able to let people do that without actually having to go through the pain of actually, you know, leasing it out. And, you know, I'm sure we can brainstorm some appropriate language, but I just wanted to ask if there's any problems that you see with that?
I mean, I don't, it's, you know, it's not something that is in the SB9 statute. So, certainly, you know, if there's discomfort of that in the program language, you know, it doesn't have to be there to provide the city the flexibility. This was just something that was discussed in our study sessions on SB9 with both the Planning Commission and the city council. And, you know, this was direction that was given, that there was an interest in doesn't, you know, requiring that these units be rented or sold, you know, and on balance, you know, in terms of, you know, what, what we would, you know, what, what we want to have as the purpose of these additional units. So, you know, I, I think we're open to hearing, you know, if you have a discussion about that and, you know, have a recommendation with respect to that program language.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure there are many parents with 20-something children who would like to make them sign a lease to keep living at home. But, yeah, we can, we can come back to that in discussion. All right, unless there are any other questions, let's open up the public comment. And I see here Commissioner Tolkin's got a question.
Yeah, I was wondering, to Commissioner Bernardi's question about alternates for housing, maybe? There are, how many parking structures scheduled for seismic upgrade or? And when they're, wondering if those have been considered, they're not on the SSI list. Have any, is there scheduling of those to be adjusted or upgraded? They could all become housing and parking because they're seismic, under, are not up to code. Is there any consideration of that?
Yeah, I, I'm trying to remember because it was four years ago, but we did, I want to say that we did, we did look at the structures. I mean, we looked at all public land. This was also, I think, informed by discussions with our in-appartemental partners, you know, who actually manage city property and in, you know, parking operations and sort of like what it takes, you know, to turn over, you know, that land. And I think it's, I think we, you know, what, what came back was, I believe Parking Structure 1 was the one, you know, that was on the list, but I think it was deemed to potentially not be feasible. You know, so I think we went, we did go through a process of assessing, you know, these city-owned sites and which ones were the ones that were sort of, you know, most, you know, easiest to turn over, I guess, you know, or had the fewest constraints on them. And, you know, as you know, Parking Structure 3 is already on that list as it's underway. And then the Art Center in Forts in Arizona, because they were already had part, been part of this public process, you know? And so, the focus was really on sort of surface lots as opposed to parking structures, you know, that, that would require the delivery of a clean site.
Answer my question. Thank you.
All right, are we ready for a public comment? Let's go ahead and put the, we're on the screen and up for callers.
We do have one caller waiting.
All right, let's hear them.
Welcome, your mic has been unmuted, and you will have three minutes for your comments. Could you first please state your full name and then go ahead?
My name is Denise Barton. Good evening, does anyone else see the same thing happening as the HCD's comments and the city's responses as has happened before? For example, there's always seems to be comments from the HCD about putting seniors and the disabled in a better place regarding the Santa Monica Housing Authority's programs and services. Yet what is said in the city's response is never what comes in reality. Take the attachment for chapter 3, Goals and Policies to Address the Community's Needs. Yet there seems to be much more focus on racial diversity and homelessness rather than on the protected classes of seniors and the disabled. So, obviously, the city's goals are more important than the abuse the seniors and disabled, affordable housing tenants have to suffer through. On page 16, Policy 6.5, seems to give the purpose of reasonable accommodations. Yet it clearly states to the left of the bottom of the box on page 18, fair housing issues that may arise in Santa Monica or any jurisdiction include, but are not limited to, failure to make reasonable accommodation, discrimination, and tenant harassment, of which I and many other tenants and affordable housing units within Santa Monica are forced to continue to live through due to the inaction of the Santa Monica Housing Authority, to the point of negligence and discrimination as well. Then towards the bottom of the page, then towards the bottom of the page, it says the city takes fair housing laws seriously with chapter 4.28 of SMMC, addressing disability and sources of income discrimination. But hasn't all this been done before? The what you have to make, you say what you have to make the state happy and then go back to the Santa Monica Housing Authority's normal practices of discrimination and harassment. Why would anyone expect anything else? Next, on page 19, Policy Number 7.2, Regarding Legal Support for Residents. If that's legal aid, I have to, have to say, because the city has pays for the legal aids yearly operating budget, that gives them control as to who they help and how. And I am speaking from experience. But we can just expect them to continue on in the same manner as well? And you wonder why affordable housing tenants go to legal aid, get no real assistance, and are forced to continue enduring the conditions in their affordable housing, housing or move as I had to do to the moldy conditions at AO Apartments, which still has not been remediated? Or would that, that be the real purpose of the actions of the reason, of no reasonable accommodation, discrimination, and harassment for affordable housing units?
Thank you, Ms. Barton, that's in three minutes.
Thank you, we have another caller.
Hi, this is Nancy.
Welcome, yeah, go ahead, please.
Hi, this is Nancy Coleman. I am calling in regard-
I am calling in regard to two issues in the R1. One is, is the question of whether or not ADUs, which are separate from the part of SB9, although you could have an SB9 situation and end up with nine units, or six units on an R1 lot, whether or not those units have to be rented. In SB9, they should, you know, you might rent them or sell them or do whatever you did if you split your lot or you built two duplexes, but how can the city mandate that somebody rent an ADU or sell an ADU? In fact, they can't sell an ADU, certainly not a junior ADU, which is within the house. So I, I'm really, the city got in trouble with this a, a number of years ago when they were requiring that people rent only to, or have only family members living in, in their units. So I, I'm curious about that. The second thing is, is that to increase the height along Montana, I understand that it will be consistent with Ocean Park Boulevard and with Main Street, but is that only in the commercial area or is that from Ocean Avenue through the city limits? It's unclear as to how that's stated. And so that needs to be cleared up. Those kinds of things are really kind of important to the housing element and to those of us who live in that area. Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
Actually, Nancy, it's a clarification, that FAR and height allowance is only for the neighborhood commercial part of Montana, which is only the commercial district.
Okay, so it goes from, from 7th through 17th Street?
Yeah, the neighborhood commercial area.
Okay, okay, well, that's, that's, but it still shouldn't be higher than what it is now. I mean, it's, there is no, there is no building currently that would, would go up that way. There is no parking along Montana, there is no public parking along Montana. So to have heights that go up that high to 55 feet anticipates housing above the commercial and there is no parking. So I don't know.
Nancy, if I may, the, the current height is 50 feet. Now, how many 50-foot buildings have been built along Montana?
None.
And so I don't anticipate that happening, but anyway.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any additional questions? Being done, thank you, Ms. Coleman, and let's move on to the next caller.
There are no more callers right now.
All right. Well, we're on to our discussion then. I didn't see whose hand was first. Commissioner Lambert, why don't you go first?
Actually, I'm, I'm going to make a motion, but I'm going to tell you why first.
I wanted to discuss.
Well, we're going to discuss, okay? I, I really feel like this is ready for the presses. With the exception of the Bergamot area zoning issue, I do not want to spend the next five hours going through this and nitpicking it because basically we've been doing that for the past year and a half. I think it's been productive because a lot of our input is actually showing up in what we have. This has to be the City Council by Tuesday night in draft form, which is what we're doing tonight. And I, and I, I just, I, I want to move this along, and I understand that for me, the only outstanding issue is the Bergamot issue. So I would make a motion that we adopt staff's recommendation and that we subject to the Bergamot determination we come up with tonight.
I'll second, if I may, but let me just make a friendly amendment and move us, try to move us along even faster because I agree with Commissioner Lambert. And my amend, my amendment would be that we set the south of the, that we, that we follow the staff's alternative recommendation for the lower height and FAR south of the of the Expo Bike Path. And that we, and that we follow the staff's recommendation for the other portion with respect to the, the, and I'll, I'll give it to you very specifically, north of Backner Way, the line that's described by the intersection of Stanford and Backner, Stanford, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania and Backner, straight across to Stewart. So what I'm looking at on a map is the, the parcels south and east of that are all mostly parking lots. Those should be 4.0 FAR, 84 feet, but the parts north and west, which are currently occupied, you know, there's the Millennium is there, there's the newly redeveloped buildings on the facing Stewart are there. There are a few other sites which could go up to 3.25 and 70 feet, you know. We might be sacrificing a little bit of capacity, but I can live with that in order to achieve a better district with the additional caveat that nothing we do should in any way disturb the agreement that preserves the right of the folks at Stanford in Pennsylvania and the trailer park from, from living.
I don't accept that amendment if we could actually see a map, because I really have no idea.
Okay, can we put up a map that shows Backner Way? It's just an easy line.
Backner Way actually runs, it, it actually runs north and south. And maybe easier if I, can I actually bring up an aerial photo? Sorry, Ross, I'm, I'm just. Yeah, this, this might be easier because I think that one didn't have.
It actually curves, which is why I was using it.
Yes.
A nice line.
Can you, can you see my screen? I don't, I don't know. So here's, so here is Backner Way, because that's actually like a private, it's a street on the Millennium property. It doesn't curve, actually. It's sort of, it runs, and then there's this, this is a private driveway here for the project. Yeah, the Millennium Project is actually, if I can just, like, like, there's this rectangle and then this is the remainder trailer park, the 10-space trailer park there.
Jane, can you zoom in like, you, just zoom in twice, you'll see what I see. Zoom in like 20.
This is not helping.
No, go, go down. Further down, like, go to words where Backner does not curve, but it looks like it does in Google Maps. Okay, you're looking at a different aerial. So do you see, Leslie, do you see, oh yeah, it says Backner Way right there. See that? Right there, right at the, you see that? That's why, that's why I said Backner Way, because it's that line at the end of that property.
Oh, I see. Okay, so you were saying north, north of Backner Way.
Exactly.
And then can you get that direction again?
Okay, I was saying that's, okay, so I was saying, and if you go back to your old map, it's actually much better. The one you had up first has a line that's perfect for our uses.
Okay.
Previously, yeah, no, go, go to the, go to the previous one. It's really easy. Okay, Leslie, you see where, do you see where it says MUC on the chart?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That line that is going, that is connecting Pennsylvania to Stewart pretty much describes Backner Way. So everything toward Nebraska from there would be 40, 4.0 and FAR, 4.0 and 84, and everything toward Colorado from that line would be 3.25 and 70.
That makes sense. Okay, that's a friendly amendment. Okay, cool.
Great, thank you.
Let, let me just remind, before we all start, remind everybody, there, in my opinion, there's nothing more important on our plate right now than getting a certified housing element. Because not doing that is a very serious situation for the city. And if we have somewhat tacit approval of this and tacit underlying by HCD, I, I just don't want to really screw around with this anymore than we already have. Anyway, that's just my opinion.
So this is, just to be clear, I just sort of read you the map here, so that's like, sort of stops right there. Right?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, I, I, I've got two discussion points that really are primarily amendment requests with respect to this motion, but let me turn to Commissioners Fresco, Fundamentari, and Tolkien to see if you all have points of discussion on the motion. Commissioner Fresco?
I support the motion. I agree with Leslie that what is not in this housing element that we haven't already fine-tuned with an incredible amount of laborious discussion. We can finish up when we start implementation.
All right, Commissioners Fundamentari or Tolkien, do you have any discussion with respect to the motion?
Well, I, I have some. I think that this is like, you know, we're being led to the, all the negotiation is done at the last minute, basically. But what we're saying is we're not at the negotiation point. We're going to deal with these authority issues farther downstream, but we are sticking our head in a noose. And the noose is going to get tighter and tighter farther down the stream we go. So I would rather hash out these issues that people have raised. For example, this whole idea that the rental of the unit is critical, I don't think it's critical at all. Because let's say I did rent a unit to my uncle for a dollar a year. That's a rental unit, and that's a very affordable unit, and the worst thing we want is for people to create affordable units. So worrying about who it's being rented to or what the circumstances are, I think it's really making us almost work against ourselves. It seems like we shouldn't be involved in those kind of decisions. If someone wants to sell the unit, then they have to subdivide the property. That's a whole different process, and that's their right. But even having made a sellable unit, they could still choose to rent it for whatever reason. They went, they should not have to sell it, let's say, in a down market. But there's a lot of issues here that, you know, we should work out, I think. I think we still haven't addressed the park shortfall. No one's spoken about that, no one's raised that. So there's a lot of issues here that are still open for debate. And yes, we'd love to get a clean comment, you know, that's compliant to the City Council, but I'm not sure this is the best way to go there.
All right, Commissioner Fresco?
I just want to say with all due respect, that we've been discussing this for months and months and months. So we, and you've brought those issues up and we've discussed them or we've passed on them or we've weighed in at any rate, and continuing to bin this out is going to get us into a lot of trouble. I mean, people are going to stop waiting for us and they're going to start building, you know, buildings like in Dallas with no zoning because we don't have a compliant zoning ordinance. So that scares me. So I think that, you know, how or even, you know, the details of how we would oversee ensuring that ADUs are built for housing and not for wine cellars, we can figure that out later. And, you know, maybe it's a gentler thing, maybe it's a dollar a year situation if it's rented to a family member, but it doesn't matter. We just need to move on.
All right, I, I've got two friendly amendments I'd like to propose here, and one is with respect to Program 4E, and that's the one that had the language about leasing or selling units to someone else. And you know, I, well, Nancy Coleman raised an interesting point about now this, this being something where we're perhaps forcing people to do something to their property that might be beyond the boundaries of, well, what, what might be allowed, but that, notwithstanding that, I, I would like to see some way to have these occupied by living, breathing. I wonder if we can wordsmith the language in there to say something like, instead of sold or leased, you know, just occupied by a being or a non-corporate ever language we've used before.
That's friendly to me. I don't know if it's friendly to you, Leslie. I don't, I wouldn't want to.
I, I'm, I'm unclear about this, and I don't have the programs in front of me. Are we talking about the accelerator program or you require one of the ADUs to be rented? Is that what we're talking about? Or just ADUs in general?
Here.
Accelerator is where you allow two ADUs if one of them is rented. Is that what you're talking, and I don't have any problem with that.
We can, we can put up language.
Program that sort of has that requirement. I'm with Ellis on this, so I'm happy to. Yeah.
It's my concern, my concern is, can I ask a question? If HCD has signed off on this concept, what is to do to us if we go back where I'm at?
Well, the program language is the commitment, you know, so we would be implementing this requirement for it to be rented or sold. It sounds like if there is discomfort with requiring that, we could certainly remove that sentence. I don't think, you know, it, it, it would not put us in violation of SB9, I guess I'll say, you know, it's not in the statute a requirement that the SB9 units be rented or sold.
Well, I mean, there's, there's no way somebody's going to build a unit on land that's expensive and not rented or sold. I mean, you know, they're crazy.
Maybe it should say that they're required to be used as individual housing units.
Yeah, that's a good one.
I like that.
That's a good one.
Is that friendly to the maker and seconder?
Yes.
Staff, do you have any issue with that?
So SB9 units shall be required to be dwelling units, basically?
Individual dwelling units, so it's not just more living space for the main house.
I'm not sure how we would enforce that.
You could say be occupied by, you know, whatever Nina said.
Well, isn't, I mean, it's all kind of vague. I mean, that's vague also, but it just, it implies more houses and not just how it's disposed of, and can we figure it out later?
Yeah.
I mean, I would suggest that it sounds like it may be simple just to delete the sentence.
Yeah, I think you're right. You're right.
Yeah, that's friendly.
Yeah, me too. And we can work all this out with the SB9 ordinance.
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then the second friendly amendment that I'm going to request is involves some language that I, I had shared with, with staff earlier this week, and I think it might be best if I can share my screen or if staff can maybe bring up the language that I'd emailed earlier.
Oh, yeah, I can do that. Sorry, I didn't find my email.
And just, just to preface this, I, I, I wanted to add some language to reference the fact that there's going to be a ballot measure submitted to the voters, assuming that they get the requisite number of signatures, to raise new sources of money to support rental assistance programs and the production of affordable housing. And I think it's important to mention that in our housing elements to reinforce fact that we're showing that if approved by voters, it'll, it'll further reinforce our commitment to the production of affordable housing and supporting renters. And I proposed some language to mention that. This isn't deleting anything where we already have, it's just adding some additional reference to a program that hopefully will support housing and renters in our community.
Can I make a comment, Ellis?
Sure.
I mean, I think there is some thinking. I'm not sure we want to go really into great detail with the state with this, but there's some thinking that this could actually be a development constraint against market-rate housing. I'm not sure we want to get too carried away with this. It raises the cost of land.
Sorry, go ahead, Jane.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if, if I could just share and, and Commissioner, Commissioner Raskin, I, I shared this with you as well, but I'll share it with the commission, you know, from staff's perspective. You know, we wouldn't recommend the inclusion of this language because we, it's quite speculative, you know, the ballot measure hasn't actually passed yet. It's not necessary, you know, for the purposes of achieving a compliant housing element. The red lines that are in there are, you know, like I said, we've received, you know, positive feedback, preliminary positive feedback from the HCD staff in terms of these program languages, and, you know, this would be putting this information here on a measure that, you know, hasn't been certified, you know, it's not qualified, you know, officially qualified yet for the ballot. The election hasn't happened. You know, this is something that certainly in our progress reporting to HCD, you know, that we would, much, much like GS and GSH, you know, in terms of monies generated for affordable housing, you know, we, we share that information in our annual progress reports, you know, and how many housing units it creates, and, you know, should, should whatever ballot measure passes, you know, that creates, you know, more dollars for that, we would report on that. That's probably a better way, you know, how, how that would be memorialized going forward, or you know, if there was a desire to amend the housing element later, you know, if this happens, it, it just, from a staff perspective, it seems, you know, quite speculative at this point, and it's not something that is necessary.
Yeah, it's not, I'm sorry, Ellis, it's not a friendly amendment. I mean, we didn't do what Culver City did, which was, which was basically exempt all housing sites, which we should have done.
Folks, if I may, I, I also, Alice, what, what I think you Alice, what, what I think you want to do, I worry, first of all, I worry about adding stuff to our housing element when we know that HCD is pretty cool with what we're talking about. And if there's a debate about housing constraints, I would not want to add it in that context. What I do think you are right to do is this is not the language to do it. It's the end of the version. It's the notion that and I, and I wonder if this is historical rather than a prospective thing, since the measure hasn't been certified. It is that Santa Monica has a, has a long and distinguished history of allocating tax revenue to funding affordable housing. We have done that. We, we, um, we did that with GSH. Um, and so, wait, let me finish the thought because I want to honor what Ellis is trying to do here. Which is to say that one of the tools that we have historically had at our disposal is raising and allocating tax revenue for affordable housing. I'm in favor of acknowledging to the state that we've done it before and we'll do it again. I think it's premature for our body as a planning commission to get into the specifics on an item that has not even been certified for the ballot, let alone deemed by the voters. I, I think that, that's just putting us at risk, honestly.
If I can respond to that, um, so, uh, chapter one of the housing element, it's actually like on page three. There is an entire history of Santa Monica's actions to support housing and it does, and, and we do say many times in the housing element um, that, you know, Santa Monica voters have voted to tax themselves. Um, you know, for the purposes of supporting affordable housing, so that.
It's already there.
In there.
Or could you live with, Ellis, could you live with, um, and because I, you know, I, I, we don't have to bring it outside, you, you know, we have um, this is an important, this is an important proposition that's coming to the voters. Could you live with an additional bullet that is acknowledging the sort of end of that statement, which is the generation and allocation of tax revenue to support affordable housing? Without prematurely referencing something that the full council hasn't, you know, dealt with or hasn't had signatures certified. Well, I could add it, right? Count, it would be council's power to add it. It's just, it feels premature from us on a process level, no matter how I might feel about it personally.
I don't think that does anything other than make Ellis maybe feel better because it's written throughout the housing element, how much money we have set aside for housing.
No, it's.
Look, like, my goal, my goal with this is, is to let HCD know that this is actually coming in as, as a major source of revenue in the future if it's approved by the voters. Uh, I, I hear that it's not friendly to the maker or secondor, so for the record, I will make a substitute motion, and I suspect I'm not going to get a second here, uh, to include that in our recommendations to the City Council.
Okay.
So you're not open to the more generic language? You really want the, the name of that ballot measure included? Because I would support a substitute motion that has, adds an additional bullet referencing generating and allocating tax revenue for affordable housing as one of the tools that we're putting on it. I just I believe, and that I think captures the ballot measure that's coming. I just think it's premature and not appropriate for our body to reference a non-certified ballot measure that, I mean, it's too early. Like, I just don't think we're in the right stage.
Language is already in the housing element.
No, but can we bring that language back on screen?
Um, Commissioner Raskin's language or?
Yeah, well, what you put up.
Sure.
Because it showed the other, it showed it in context, and I think that we could get there. I just.
Program two E.
Yeah, so the city will use a variety of tools to facilitate a funded percent affordable housing. One, two, three, four exist, and five would be supporting measures to generate and allocate tax revenue for the, supporting and gen measures to generate and allocate, yeah, that's good. Measures, because that's inclusive of all kinds, and allocate tax revenue for the acquisition and development of deed restricted affordable housing. We've done it in the past and we would do it again.
Not a friendly amendment.
I mean, but, but I'll second your substitute motion. If that's, if you live with that language.
Because, and then my objection is that this is exactly what's in those initiatives and I consider them development constraints.
So vote again.
They raise the price of land for market rate housing and I have a problem with that.
Okay, but vote against it then.
So, Sean, just, just to clean this up then, so I'll, seeing that this is the best I'm going to get here. Uh, let's, let's go with this for the substitute motion, but there, there, this, these were at, these, I guess the red lines were added to three different programs and, and uh, I don't know if you want to add them into the other two, and I think we can just copy and paste the language from the first one for program two F, since that's also about the acquisition and development of deed restricted affordable housing. And the third was for measures that will provide income assistance. And I think you can copy and paste most of that sentence that you have there and then just replace acquisition and development with uh, income assistance programs.
Sure, I'm good with that.
What did you just do?
Can we see the red line version? I just couldn't follow all that.
Me neither.
So.
Let me give Jing a second to.
That's great. Yeah, Jing knows exactly what we're talking about. That, yeah, income, not tin come.
Can we, can we, hey, can we add language without saying that, without creating development constraints? Or do you care?
I mean, I think that's declarative of the law.
It's not, well, the initiative, well, it depends on your opinion, I guess.
So I also just want, I want to make clear here too, that what is within control of the city as a government, which is placing a measure on the ballot is not actually adopting those ballot measures, right? So I just want to make sure that that distinction is not lost here because it's up to the voters, right, for these taxing measures? So it's also always going to be, which is why it talks about the support of the measures.
Correct.
Um, just language, right? So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page when it comes to that because this is ultimately going to be a voter's decision in terms, so in terms of the commitment that the city can make, it has to be limited to what the city itself can do.
And I, I can, I, I can live with this and also study individual measures for their impact on housing constraints and develop an opinion about whether I think that's a constraint or not, as can every other voter, council member and planning commissioner. This language does not take, does not imply constraints, so I don't think there's a reason to oppose this.
It's not up to us, Sean, it's up to HCD.
Leslie, I.
It implies we're constraining housing.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm fine adding Commissioner Lambert's proposed language. That'll get us to a majority, hopefully.
You said what? I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm fine adding the language that you had proposed about housing constraints.
Excellent, thank you.
We, we need your vote.
I, I'm fine with that. Because as you may know, Culver City is doing it very differently.
There you go.
All right.
Measures that are not housing constraints, keep it plural.
Right.
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 Yep. Yep.
Okay.
You want to say ballot measures? Whatever.
No, that's correct. That, that that right, that works.
Just measures, measures is good.
So is this now friendly to us, Leslie? Sure as heck is friendly to me.
Yes, yes, yes.
Cool, substitute motion needed.
Okay.
Fabulous.
All right, are we, are we all clear on what, what now constitutes the scope of the motion?
Yes.
Certification?
Maybe you may want to restate it, but.
Uh, well, I think we're, we're back on with the original motion. Right?
Would you, would you like me to repeat that, what the motion is? So we have a, a motion by Commissioner Lambert, seconded by Commissioner Landris to adopt the staff recommendation with the following amendments. Um, for the mixed use creative zone south of the bike path, that is the staff recommended alternative of 3.25 uh, FAR and 70 feet. And then the same thing for mixed use creative, um, north of the, um, what I'll call the Pennsylvania Avenue parcel line, I guess, or Backner Way, as just described on the map. And then, um, in program two E, add a new bullet point, support measures that are not housing constraints to generate and allocate tax revenue for the acquisition and development of deed restricted affordable housing. In program two F, add the following sentence after the third paragraph, support measures that are not housing constraints generate and allocate tax revenue for the acquisition and development of deed restricted housing. And then in program six E, add the following sentence after first paragraph describing that program or measures that are not housing constraints to generate and allocate tax revenue for income.
Good.
Great.
Good job.
All right, let's have a roll call vote then.
Okay, Commissioner Fond de Menardie?
No.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkien?
No.
And Chair Raskin?
Yes.
Five, two.
That passes.
We did it, we did it, you guys.
Uh, I think that's everything this agenda items, is that right?
Yep, that's all.
All right, well, then we can move on to public input, item number 10. Uh, public input is permitted only on items not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. State law prohibits the body from taking any action on items that are not listed on the agenda, including issues raised through this agenda item. So let's open up the caller queue and put the timer up. All right, did we get any callers?
No, we did not.
Okay. Yeah, I, I've, I've got the YouTube feed going simultaneously. I've seen that there's really a 45 second delay, so, you know, really this only gives callers about 15 seconds bill time to call in. Having.
Why do you watch YouTube feed at the same time?
Well, it, it came up because I, I dropped out partway through the, uh, uh, staff presentation for the last item and the PowerPoint didn't come up, so I could only see it on the YouTube feed.
Oh, okay.
All right, do we have, we have any, any callers?
No, we don't.
All right. In that case, we can adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Uh, this meeting is adjourned at 7:34 PM.
Good job, Ellis.
Thank you, Ellis.
Thank you, everyone.
Great work.
See you, guys.